Good evening, it is now 7:03. We will call to order the meeting for September 19th, 2013. First order of business is agenda changes. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None here.
No agenda changes, all right? We have a first thing we get to do is an executive session to review pending litigation with counsel. So we will go into executive session. Is he calling in at 7:15?
He said I could call at any time around now, so.
Okay.
It'll take about 15 minutes.
All right. We will be in executive session for 15 minutes, starting at 7:05. All right, we will call the meeting back to order at 7:31:25. Thank you all for waiting patiently. The next thing we have is public comments. As always, please address your public comments to the board, and please try to be civil. Thank you. First would be Ms. Lindbrough.
(Inaudible). Tonight, Mr. Walker's going to explain to you a budget that confirms what we already have. He's going to wave his head and doesn't know what he's doing. He'll try to distract you with claims of victimhood, but he's a victim of only two things: his incompetence and a war-souring mist of tolerability. He has copies of the questions I provided to you earlier, and I'm sure some of the public as well are going to address that. Later, he'll address Resolution 902. No matter what you do, you can't change what's been done. For her commissary vote and Mr. Walker's partner to use false information to justify terminating two long-term employees, destroying the viability of the district's highly successful swim team, and thrusting the district into two utterly defenseless lawsuits. Mr. Walker's violation of federal law relegated him to the sidelines, but you allow Mr. Walker to carry on. Don't kid yourselves. Every resolution ever enacted by this district is housed in one binder. Mr. Walker held Resolution 9973 in his POC, held 0902 as well. He's without excuse. Gave up his duty, and the board failed to responsibly oversee him. You owe it to the people of this district to immediately terminate him and offer the board's humblest apologies to Mr. Romney, Mrs. Robinson, and the public. Finally, my family has resigned from EnLAC, and I'd like you to know why. I've decided it's time for us to -- it's been time for hope to pass. Those that think that my hope is for Neil to return are wrong. I could not hope for him to return to those who promptly dehumanized him. In prosecuting their agenda, Mr. Walker and select members of this board and this community set aside their regard for the district and for EnLAC, and also set a right side in regards for humanity sincerely. Even now, some of you think more of yourselves than make less of him. I could never hope for him to return to that. My hope is actually in you. No other activity has provided more for my children than EnLAC did to give them an authentic form for developing critical and transferable life skills. It was instrumental in transforming their lives and the lives of the infamous community at giving them vision for success. Today, EnLAC is vacuous, devoid of purpose and focus, lacking in competent investigative leadership, collapsing under the weight of the same veil of recidivism, possible loss within the district. My hope is that the power of truth would prod you to step beyond your biases, instill the consciences of courage and majority aboard, and compel you to overcome your misguided belief that protecting Mr. Walker was the same thing as protecting the district. I hope that for all our differences, the majority share an overriding common goal of advocating for the strength of Walker in the district and its programs, and for embracing our ability to impact the lives of our community for good and our youth. I know now we do not. And so with confidence that I have given hope every opportunity, I close the door in futility, and remove my group of family on to a place of purpose and meaning. And here's those questions. These are relative to the budget mostly.
I apologize, I cannot read.
Peggy Doherty.
Peggy, thank you very much, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I am just here because I want to know what's going on. I swim every morning at 6:00 with my older ladies and myself. And we have a feeling of we're uncomfortable because of the way the EnLAC kids have treated the new coach. Now, you vetted him. We saw how those kids treated the other two interim coaches. They were -- I mean, and we're not involved in it. We have nothing to lose, nothing to gain. But it's like, if you vetted this new coach, then why are all these kids quitting? If they don't like the coach, they can go somewhere else, but don't -- it's ridiculous. It's like it's making us all feel extremely uncomfortable because some EnLAC kids that aren't involved in the club anymore come in and they have an air of entitlement that they can get a lane whenever they want, they bring out the sheet from the old coach, and they do their laps or whatever. So it's insulting to the new coach, who's standing there, and he sees these kids practicing. They didn't even give him a chance. It's like, really? You guys voted him, you found him, you hired him. The other coach, Neil, what's his name, Romney? He was rude. He wouldn't give up lanes a lot to military guys that would come in to swim. We knew that we got three lanes, EnLAC got three lanes. We were okay with that. But he wouldn't give up a lane, you know, when he was in a bad mood, he wouldn't give up a lane. So he had four lanes, and the rest of us were standing around trying to swim. I'm sorry, but if he comes back, I know myself and a lot of other people will not support this pool. And if a levy comes up, we will not vote, we will hope it closes, because it needs cleaning out and redone. Enough said. Like I said, it's like, give that coach a chance. And I don't think some of these kids did. And I think that's wrong, because you guys hired him. So if you thought he was good enough to hire, then why aren't they listening to him? When they get older and they go to college and they don't like the professor, what are they going to do? Quit? What kind of lesson is that teaching these kids? So I'm done. But I've been watching this for months, going on and on, and it was like somebody needed to say something, because the other -- this past week, it was so -- I felt embarrassed for Bill, the new coach, because these kids just waltzed in, got a lane, and pulled out their paper, and I knew, as soon as they pulled out that paper, it was Neil teaching these -- you know, they were following his instructions. Well, that's fine, but do it on your own time. Don't come and take a lane from Navy people who want to come in and swim. So enough said. I'm done, I think. I think.
Thank you. Cory?
Cody.
Sorry, Cory.
My name's Cody Johnson. First off, I would like to start off by saying, I think it's ironic that somebody wants to preach to the board about what's right and wrong, and how Neil was so -- such a great person, and he was doing the right things, when that person was $8,000 behind in their payments to the program. I have documentation to show this. If anybody would like to see it, I can. Magically, that number disappeared. In November last year, the director found that, fixed that problem. I think if anybody's doing the right thing, it's been the director. He's trying to clean up a mess that was created under the interim director of Neil Romney and Craig. I just want to show you some more. It all started years ago. $8,000 behind. It doesn't happen overnight. So this was an ongoing problem for years. So it happened when Craig was here, and then when Neil was the interim director. Someone was behind $8,000 to EnLAC. There was two families between two families. One was behind $3,000. The other one was behind almost $9,000. And the commission has stepped up and showed support for that family that is not fiscally responsible to the taxpayers to come out and support a family that is not fiscally responsible to the program, all the other kids swimming, and the taxpayers that are coming here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is all we have for public comment. Thank you all. We will now move on to minute approval. Any changes, deletions, or additions to the minutes from August 15, 2013 meeting?
I have a problem that I would like to address, hopefully not in due delay of minutes. If I may talk with the motion. The -- if we go to the second page, first page, this is very superficial, overused on the text, but it has sort of dangling comments, like budget of $16,000 plus and minus is now an EnLAC checking account, the commission will need to identify it. This is a statement of what was done. This is sort of some sort of a thing to the commission that they've got to do something without defining what it is. I had no idea what that's all about. I was at the meeting. So I think we have to keep the minutes so that they're factual and just describe what was said, and not have these dangling things in here, which we can never go back to and get any meaning out of. I don't know what they are.
How about this? How about on the staff reports, we do the same things we did in public comments, in the final comments, refer to YouTube, and that will be that. It's not official business, doesn't have to be in there.
You've got that as public comments, but we do have to have a list of decisions that are made in meetings.
Only decisions, correct?
Just a second. And the next point, when we go to the Jew's proposal, what we have is five pieces of -- to approve the five pieces of the Jew's proposal. It may be a hassle, but we should write out what they are, because at the next meeting, we may vote on the same thing again, not knowing that they were voted on, because they're not in the minutes. We can't tell what's there, and, you know, the pile of papers gets awful big. So that you should have, if something's defeated, we should know what was defeated, okay, in the minutes. If something's passed, we should know what's passed. And if something's hypothetical, it should either be stated as a hypothetical statement or at least have a substance in it, so we know what we're wandering around with, because that $16,000 doesn't tell me anything. I don't know what it is. Okay? So I have problems with those. The discussion of requirements of majority on their new business, the two-thirds vote had nothing to do with the tabling of the motion. It had to do with whether we had a notice given that was adequate to make it a majority vote. And so what we have here is something that sounds like we voted on or were concerned, but it was a two-thirds vote required to rescind a tabled motion, or not. That's not what it was all about at all. What it was about was the notice which was given for the motion to rescind. Okay? And that's a very different debate. If the motion was not -- if the notice was not adequate, then it had to have a two-thirds vote. If the motion was seen as adequate, then we do it in a majority vote. That's Robert's rules. Okay? So that sort of miss there is a problem. And then there's a comment down at the end about public comment too, where Commissioner Hart mentions allocation of $16,000 plus in EnLAC bank accounts, let's not make the motion. I don't know what that's there for. You see, so I'm having a real problem with just knowing what happened in the last meeting. So, but I can say, okay, we've done those things, and now what's going on from these minutes? Does that make sense?
Steve, do you want to say something?
Actually, I do. I officially resign as the secretary of the EnLAC Connect District. Alan thinks he can do such a good job.
Okay, okay.
That's the reality. And I actually nominate Alan to repeat that.
We'll have to make an agenda change, but Steve no longer wants to be the secretary.
I will have to be the secretary.
Yeah, but we're going to finish changing this.
Take one. You know, I've tried to do a good job, but that was, you know, early on. But it seems like right now, you know, maybe Alan would do a better job with this. It seems like he's able to find those things, and I think he would do a wonderful job. And I really don't know that I am truthful. And with that said, I do want to do it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, additions, or deletions to the minutes from last month's meeting?
Can we make a motion to approve with these changes, or should we have them re-done first? Sounds like Alan has a lot of questions.
We can do both.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 15, 2013 with noted changes from Alan.
I have a motion to approve.
There's an audio recording.
Okay, let's get a motion in a second before we move on to discussion, please. So I have a motion to change the minutes from August 15, 2013 meeting with the changes brought forth by Commissioner McDougal. Do I have a second? I have a second. Now we can discuss it. So Alan, you don't know how to make the changes, which would include the five pieces that needs to be written in here. Why don't we rewrite them? We'll table the amendments until next month, and then they can be rewritten?
I'd be happy to help, but I just -- I think we have to have some sort of policy to accept what we should have in. And some discussion along those lines. I really would like to, for us, I mean, to think about having a work group or a special session.
That's part of the business.
Oh, never mind. But I think that's a great idea. Maybe we can iron some of these things out, because I just don't, for some reason, during other meetings, we run out of time. We're trying to get through a lot of information, and I don't know. We need to get together, just in a work group.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I can't change a motion.
We need to table that, right? Make a motion to table the minutes until the changes are made, until next month?
So we have amendment to table a motion, table the minutes until next month, and that can be redone. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Stephen.
Stephen Staines, thank you. Now, the cool thing about being the chair is I get to point to people to do that. Can Alan and Kirk work on that together?
Alan.
Kirk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, I'm all for that.
All right, so Alan and Kirk will work together to redo the minutes as a subcommittee and bring them back for next month. All right. Finish with the minutes approval. All right, we'll move on to voucher review. Questions on the vouchers.
I have a couple of questions and information, but should we get motion first, too?
That would be great.
On the motion to approve vouchers, 5930 to 5985, and the payroll account of $62,897.97.
So we have a motion to approve vouchers 5930 to 5985, and the payroll account of $62,897.97. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
I have a number of questions. On -- I didn't have numbered pages when I copied this, so chuckle now, but on page nine, you talk about the DORP in a Department of Revenue. Fee. Bill, wherever you are.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to hear you moved.
Okay, sorry. It's a DOR, it's on page nine of your handout.
Yes.
It says, DORP 4380, I think 62, and Department of Revenue 174499.
Yes.
Okay, what's that all about?
The fee, we discussed this the last couple of meetings, actually, we are moving away from using the Visa card to pay the Department of Revenue. We had to establish that new bank account first, which we did last month, and actually, yesterday was the first time we paid our DOR with the credit transfer. So we won't see that fee anymore after August. The fee is to go online to pay your Department of Revenue, pay your sales tax.
Oh, this is a sales tax.
Right. And then when you pay the sales tax with the credit card, you have a fee.
Okay.
We won't be doing that anymore.
Okay, because it happens again on my page 14, which would be your page 20, I guess.
Yes.
And is that the two months in the second meeting?
Yeah, in August, we paid one bill on the first, and we paid another on the 29th. So you see two Visa cards standing in the same month.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I had was, lifeguard certificates. We paid almost $1,000 for lifeguard certificates in these two months if you total it up in all of the charge cards. What is a lifeguard certificate that's worth that much money?
That's a great question. We actually certified a lot of lifeguards. We ran a tour of the classes this summer, and I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you exactly what the certificates cost, but that's part of the cost when they pay for the class.
We couldn't get one and put it on a coffee machine, and it's a different name tag?
No, it has to be a fresh original from the Red Cross with their name printed. So you're not just paying for the certificate, it's the Red Cross fee for actually certifying the lifeguard.
Oh, that includes a fee.
That's right.
Okay, good. Because it seems sort of.
Yeah, it's not just a fancy goldie.
The number of swim meets mentioned, for example, Little Caesar's for a swim meet on the, looks like June 30th, 28th, 30th, 29th, or anything.
We bought a bunch of pizzas to sell by the swans.
To sell?
Yeah, it was a concession item.
So what would the revenue be?
That actually goes into concession revenue, so it's hard to pinpoint exactly how much we sold. So I know that we were selling about profit, for sure. We did have a little bit left over, and we sold most of it.
I think that's a start. Thank you, holding on to that.
That's our annual.
Is that our annual fee to the loaned doctors and other units?
Loan of sea lions, I know as you're buying hospitality swim for China City.
Yep.
What was that for?
That was oversight. As you know, normally, coaches and maybe your volunteers have something to eat, a swim meet is provided by volunteers.
Right.
We got to meet that night, and nobody had done, completely started, so, you know, we couldn't run out and grab something from the safe area, we had to get a bribe in. So that was my decision, it was an over-spend. It's not that much, but it was at the last second, and it was the best solution at the
In the past, Alan, we provided food by current volunteers?
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Normally, it's provided by volunteers, and, you know, you'll either reimburse the parent for minor expenses that they went through to put it together, or it's just donated.
Well, I mean, I understand that, people are hungry.
It's just a bad point, a horrible point of overspending.
Yeah, I think that's another policy issue we need to kind of look at when we do our work sessions or whatever. We've got to figure, we've got to rope in some of these expenditures that are not, from what I can see in working with, you know, I've been working with a government entity for a few years, a local government too, a county. We can't even buy coffee for people. So it just strikes me anytime I see something like that as being questionable, for sure. At a minimum. And as a taxpayer, I mean, the swim club really should be somehow providing that food for these folks that are coming in. And you know that, and I know.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
I'll let some of you say. I'm going to roll with some more questions.
Oh, well, biggest problem I have, you know, I'm just going to go big thing. I've been requesting this, and this is along the lines of vouchers, and every month we come here, we've got to approve these vouchers. I mean, these are our bills, we're going to approve them. However, I've been digging in them, and there's some vouchers, there's some reimbursements for, to Mr. Patterson for per diem, and a coach to travel that really wasn't, I don't think necessary, is an additional coach. Per diem, $71 a day when meals are provided. You get food at swim meets, correct? You down to swim, you get food, they feed you pretty good, especially down in the nest. Plus, you stay at Comfort Inn to get breakfast, but we're still paying $71 a day, and you're approving it. And I don't understand. That's in travel. That's historical, that's been going on under the previous coaching.
No, I'm not so sure, but I'd like to see it. See the vouchers.
Well, if you like to set up a policy, then, you know, certainly.
Well, we do need to do that, for sure. I mean, I don't understand paying $71 a day for somebody that's getting meals. It's just ridiculous. And we did the same thing for Jared when he went down to Marysville, paid a mileage and per diem, $61.
Well, you know, Kirk, I've been looking back, because of public record requests, I've been looking back into the past.
I'm not worried about the past.
I'm just saying, this is.
Neil never took coaches with him, and if they go and they pay, they're only.
They take per diems.
All right. You're going to have to show it to them, and I'm going to call you on it. Anyway, these are just things. I mean, I don't get per diem when I travel if I get food, and I'm not going to claim per diem. I think it's ridiculous that you would claim it. And I think, you know, to pay it is pretty ridiculous, too. And that's in this travel stuff. This travel budget, I want to look at, is way over budget. Right now, we're $160,000, almost $170,000 year-to-date in the loss for this district, and that's your management.
That is not as compared to the budget.
That is your date. That is profit.
Okay, can we talk? Stop, 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 stop. Steve, thank you.
All right. No, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Let's stick to the budget, stick to the vouchers, please.
I'm just saying, we need to get.
Let's stick to the vouchers, please.
All right. I'm going to say.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Got questions or comments about the vouchers? Let's stick to the vouchers. Any other questions, comments about the vouchers? All right, all in favor to pass voucher approval for vouchers numbered 5930 through 5985, and the payroll count of $62,897.97. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? All abstaining? Motion passes. All right, next is the directors, the combined staff reports.
Okay, I'm going to rush by a bunch of things here, because I know I want to get to talking about the budget. about the budget until we get to in detail. Um, just a couple of personal notes. Um, Ms. Shelley is working her last evening shift for the district tonight, she's sitting right out there, so let's say goodbye to her on the way out. Won't see her again, she and her husband are moving to Oregon, and, uh, he's getting out of service, has a job down in Medford, so, um, he's been heard, is on goodbye, and, um, it's been great having her, and she's been an amazing staff member. She's been our senior cashier for the past year, and just done an awesome job getting this organized, and that's... She's being, um, uh, assisted by Erin Trindle, our senior cashier, and, uh, I will mention in a couple of minutes here that, um, my intent is to get, um, uh, Erin to, excuse me, to stop Shelley's credit card and, uh, get Erin's credit card to replace it. So I'll talk about that in a second. Um, Ms. Sarah Neal also, I think many of you probably know, Ms. Sarah Neal, our, uh, instructor and lifeguard here, had a baby a couple of weeks ago, her name's William, and, uh, she was about this big in a bikini out here teaching at Medford, almost until the day she delivered, so, congrats to her and her husband. Um, kind of a sad note here, one of our master swimmers, um, some who may be acquainted with Connie Williams, um, been a regular at the pool here for the last couple of years, disappeared about three weeks ago, and her picture was in the paper, I contacted the sheriff a couple of days ago, and said, there's still in her casebook, so, uh, our thoughts are with Connie and, uh, hoping that she's okay, wherever she may be. Um, there's, and then again, my, uh, report about Sarah Baxter as employee of the month, a nice writer from Curtis Beach because she's helped Curtis off with a number of events that he's been running over the last couple of months, and, uh, I would like to add, as a parent who has raised three kids into adulthood, and obviously knowing them, and knowing all their friends as they've grown up, there are kids to go out and find things to do to volunteer in the community solely because they want that bow mark on their resume, or they want that, they want that honor society thing, and have to go out and do it to get credits for school. Sarah Baxter is the kind of kid that the honor society should seek out, because she does things for the community all the time. This girl is heavily involved in swim team, she's co-captain of the swim team, volunteer to school, volunteers all over town, and she's the kind of kid that you'd be proud to call your daughter, she's got great parents too, and they're really, really funding her, so, congratulations to her. Um, also wanted to mention really quickly that after Paul Brinstoll's presentation that he made at the last meeting, I'm proud to say that Veterans Resource Council has stepped up and taken a financial risk, actually, by funding the vets swim free program. They are going to pay for disabled vets to come to the pool, and in return, we emphasize the fact that they're doing that, and hopefully that people decide that they're going to run into Veterans Resource Council. So, it's a, it's a great plan, and once, uh, once Paul Brinstoll can get the support from the commission, and a pretty good line of communication with me and others who work, um, he just might do raises. And, uh, they'll operate the same way that our military checkpoint program that's, that's coming out, there are certain types of ID that they're allowed to provide, and, um, we'll, uh, we'll check in at the front desk, and we'll bill Veterans Resource Council two hundred and sixty-two cents the end of the month.
I interrupt you, don't they have any fund, Veterans Resource Center, aren't they doing a fundraiser on September twenty-seventh?
We are. They, they're mentioning that Wendy's Burger Bash.
It's Wendy's Burger Bash at what time?
It's, uh, evening hours, somebody has the wire.
I know it's the twenty-seventh, it's my anniversary, so...
I got lots of these.
Thank you very much.
We're having a little personal beer, he's Coast Commander of the K F W.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, yes, uh...
Who owns this fundraiser? Is it the Veterans Association?
Veterans Resources.
The, as Steve said, the manager of Broken Island, that also manages veterans of the poor, poor wars around the corner. He approached us, the only thing he wanted my organization to do was to hand this out. All the money, all the stuff is being done by the Veterans Resource Center down in Freeland, I believe it is, down in American Legion down there. They are doing everything. Like I said, they asked us to pass out the North End, that's all they asked from us.
Paul did, uh, when I, in one of my discussions with Paul, he was asking for a volunteer coordinator on the North End, because V R C is out of Langley, Clinton's area somewhere, and...
In American Legion, South End is where they meet out.
Okay, right there off of Highway twenty?
Yes.
It's not Highway twenty down there, but, um, so, they're looking for a volunteer coordinator, and, uh, I've contacted a couple of people to get in touch with Paul. He's actually in Europe right now on vacation. Hopefully, he has a good vacation. I'm sorry, so, September twenty-seventh at five to eight at Wendy's down here in Oak Harbor, the money will go to the Veterans Resource Center to help, uh, vets swim free, and that's pretty awesome.
Can I put that on Facebook?
Yes.
Thank you for letting me air it. Go ahead.
Okay, very good. Um, I wanted to, um, bring up and, uh, hopefully get a decision from the commission here. I emailed you earlier this week regarding, um, the movie that's being shot here on the island, and, uh, pretty exciting event, pretty cool. There's, um, it's going to be filming, thank you for coming.
Thanks, thanks.
It's going to be filming down at, uh, Coop Little Wharf, filming all over the island. I spoke with the director the other day, and he asked for some time, and he used to film a swim meet, a whole, a state swim meet, it's part of the, part of the plot of the group, and, um, it's a vital part of the plot. And, uh, he's, he's salesman, you know, he, he brings the, it's all about the community ticket. But, um, a couple of things, first of all, I quoted him, the, um, normal rental price, people get the pool for an hour and a half for a hundred and fifty dollars, so I quoted him a hundred dollars an hour. And, um, he said, well, golly, that's not in our budget, is there anyone going to break on that? I said, I'm not doing that, without the commission approving. Um, the other thing we talked about was, there's time on Sunday mornings where the pool is not scheduled for use up until noon, and there's time in the evenings after the pool closes when he could come in.
But we have to pay for lifeguards, we have to pay for staff.
Right, and then we would have enough, yeah. We would, we would staff it, Erica and Travis are already prepared for chassbroches, hopefully, I think, they'd love to be a part of it, so that, you know, we can staff it, that's not the problem. Um, the issue is, because of the movie scheduling and all logistics behind everything, they may not be able to do it at those times. So if he would like to have the pool, kind of like we close the pool for a swim meet, he'd like to have the pool from five in the morning until noon or one o'clock on weekday. This would displace, um, the day, another day, um, in lack, Aurora Harbor High School, a ton of lap swimmers, um, aerobics, swim school, um, possibly even into the in-wack afternoon time, but we're not sure, so...
And he doesn't want to pay the hundred dollars an hour on top of that?
I told him that...
Seeing how cold it is in here.
Yeah. I told him that, um, I needed to bring this to you. Personally, I think it's a great idea to be a part of this, I would love it if he could do the hundred dollars an hour and do it in those off-hours, that'd be great. Um, we could do that pretty much without me bringing this to you, but, um, on the issue of the discount, and on the issue of scheduling over a bunch of normal programs, and he would say he'd give us a week notice so we'd inform people, but still, that's pretty, that's a major thing, and it's not a normal thing, so, um, I wanted to bring that to the commission.
Can we negotiate, like, a block of time, instead of saying, oh, maybe from this time to that time, but maybe say a hundred dollars an hour for three-hour or four-hour block, cap it off, and put it so it doesn't affect too many programs, or is he pretty much, he needs that in order to...
Well, I think he's probably going to need eight hours.
Sorry.
And it can't be on a day that we're not, or like, in the middle of the night?
Well, that's what he's shooting for. He's going to try to do it in the middle of the night or on a Sunday morning.
Oh, okay, I thought you said he said he couldn't do it on a Sunday.
That's what he's trying for, but his, his concern is, with all these other logistics that are flying around, you know, for instance, if he's not ready on one Sunday morning, and it's, he takes another day to get ready for all of the logistics behind it, or what happens if one of his movie stars can only be here all day? Those, those...
He needs to go to Bonnie Double then.
Yeah.
Where's he getting the people from?
Well, when I told him we have swim teams, seven kids on, he was pumped, you know, he wants, uh...
You've got to get parents approval, all that stuff.
Well, believe me, he's, he's a groupie director, he understands, you know, how early he's in life, and stuff like that. But, um, yeah, he'll want some competitors, he wants extras, you know, he'll, that's his deal, he'll bring those people.
I think it's an opportunity for a good press, too.
Let's, let's have a motion, and then we can discuss it. So, do we have a motion for any type of support?
I make a motion that we support Bill and the decision to allow the movie director to come in, hopefully on off-hours, um, at a rate, a discounted rate, to be determined through discussion. I don't know what the cost would be, if it was, well, I can ask questions, that's my motion.
Why don't, why don't we try something like this? Um, a move that we make the pool available to this person on one day, for a full day, on one of two weekends, which we can adjust to meet his schedule at the rate of a hundred dollars an hour.
So a motion to make the pool available on a weekend day for eight hours, one of two weekends that we can move the date to at a hundred dollars an hour.
That's right. Now, if you guys want to change it around, at least I could choose a timeline.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, now discussion.
What is the different, do you have a different proposal for discounted rate? Would a hundred dollars an hour be fair, or is he saying he cannot at four hundred dollars an hour?
I'm not sure what he can actually afford, I think he's, he's just bargaining.
Okay.
Um, I, I can also say, um, that there are weekends right now that are, as opposed to being, having regular programs on them, they're actually booked for specific rentals that people have already paid for, or, right, so he put those on the books already. Indeed, we could find a weekend that is available, but...
What timeframe, since we're talking about giving programs now?
October, sometime in October.
Some, sometime in October.
Yeah, he wants to get it off filming by the end of the month.
I think that's up to you to negotiate with him, but what we're doing is, we're giving you, um, a statement if that's what we, we think is reasonable, and then if you have a problem, you can come back to us. But that's, that's your stick.
But the motion is about only on a weekend.
Yes. Guys want to change it, they can, but that's...
Right, I'm just thinking, there's, there's not very many weekends in October that haven't already been specifically booked for some other rental.
So it's every day.
Right, I, what, what I'm saying is, there, there are, for instance, if we book, if we book a Aurora Harbor High School swim meet, then that covers, that, that blocks out regular programs, that doesn't block out, that doesn't create a conflict between somebody that says, hey, if I could book the pool for a rental...
That's a regular user, this is, I don't want to block, and I'll be quite honest with you, Bill, I don't want to take away programs, for somebody that's not a regular user of the pool, I don't care how good the press is. You know, um, this is a person that's not a regular user, is coming to us, asking on bended knee for a discount, uh, doesn't want to pay a hundred dollars an hour, and wants us to be flexible to meet his felony in schedule.
He's asking for everything, and he's hoping to get something.
Right.
Sure, so, my, I guess my contention is that, you know, we negotiate that to him. If you've got the starting position.
Yes.
Is there a pool on Saturday?
Pool, um, yes, but not on Sunday.
Although, you have private, you can rent the pool at eleven, is that right?
That's only on Saturdays, because, private lessons, Saturday and Sunday, that can be rescheduled around, it's...
Maybe he would have a pool six, six o'clock, tell me, on Sunday, for six hours.
Or come in whenever he wants, well, if he ever lays wants.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, uh, in terms of pool close on Saturday, except, and there's a, there's a rental time, you know, after that, so...
It seems like the meet Sunday would be the time where you could give a block of time that wouldn't displace, very, wouldn't displace anywhere. I mean, I guess if you, one goes up from twelve to two, open swivel.
Lap swim twelve to two, open swim, two through thirty, rental time, and another open swivel, and another rental time.
So if you wanted eight hours, I mean, you could, I guess, do the six to noon, or six to two, and then you're only displacing two hours.
Sorry, Steve, I was that guy that didn't turn it off.
You know, it's definitely about affecting, you know, programs at swim school, or, or people who are serious lap swimmers, or, you know, masters, or anybody like that. I mean, maybe we should all frame this six hours with the thought of an additional two hours if, if you really had to have it. And instead of a hundred dollars an hour, maybe it should be a discounted rate of, you know, eight hours for five hundred dollars, or something like that.
So you're proposing an amendment to...
I'm just discussing.
Discussing. Sunday?
Okay, I, I would like to, uh, I'd like to amend the motion to where it's on Sunday that we offer him a time slot between six and two in the afternoon, eight hours, at a rate of five hundred dollars. Pardon?
Excuse me, thank you. Billy, please, thanks.
The pool is closed from six.
Sit, this, pool is closed from six until twelve on Sunday. So six AM to two PM on Sunday for five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Is an amendment. Do we have a second to amend?
Second amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
I don't think we should limit the time that he can start, we could, we could say four AM, three AM, directors do crazy things. I think you could put it in before.
Okay.
I just think that you should cap it, like you were saying, too, but I'm even thinking maybe twelve, depends on whether the party that day.
But if, if we do that, if we go over, if it goes over the eight hours, then we'd treasure more.
Right, for the regular rate, huh?
Yes, because at that point, it would have to go up.
So the baseline start for you to talk to him would be between three AM and two PM at five hundred dollars?
For eight hours. Can I make a suggestion to Chairman Park? There, there will still be upset people that normally come in on Sunday at noon, and there are people that come in on Sunday at noon till last one, and we'll be displacing them as well.
Twelve to two is lap swim?
Yes, so what if we say you, you can come in anytime you want, and swim until, and be in the pool until noon, and you have to be out of the pool and available for lap swimmers to come in at noon?
I'm in the motion.
They need to start their gear setting.
I'm in the motion again, to where they have to be out by noon.
By noon, so six, so whenever they start to twelve noon on Sunday for five hundred dollars.
Up to eight hours.
Up to eight hours. Up to eight hours till noon on Sunday for five hundred dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? My question is, how much were we, we'd have to have two lifeguards on duty, correct? So how much would that cost us?
That's what the rental would be paid for, and that costs us...
Right, but is, is the five hundred still going to cover everything?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
We negotiated on how well the movie does.
We do want some acknowledgement of the press.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of up to eight hours ending at noon on a Sunday for five hundred dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? All abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, last item, again, I just wanted to, um, mention, and I went back to our credit card policy in Resolution oh-nine-oh-six, which I don't think I've provided you a copy of, Paul knows I passed this down, you don't see it, but, um, the, um, the director is supposed to be able to decide who gets credit cards, but I'd rather just let you know I'm doing it, but there's discussion in the way the motion is, it's great, but I will be switching Shelley's card over, dissent from Shelley's card, and putting one in the name of Erin Trindle, um, for the same limit, which I believe is five hundred dollars. So, comments or discussion?
Save that for, uh...
That's in part of the report.
Send in.
Report.
Is that in our report?
Is that in yours? Um, so, I think that was in my report. No, it's not in my report. Okay, welcome and honored. Um, in my report on page twenty-three, um, I mentioned the employee family swim privilege. That's been slightly undefined for the last year and a half, at least that I've been there. Um, it's been kind of loose, we've sort of tried to guide it around anybody that's worked in the last month or two, or anybody that's just been hired, and or, of course, planning to work in the next month or two, and maybe about four hours a month, and... or two, and maybe about four hours a month. Obviously, you know, your kids can come in, but what about your siblings? I had some questions about this last week for one of our cashiers, and thought it would be a good idea to at least lay out the way that I'd like to define this, and see if there's any discussion here, if you need to make a motion, that's fine, but the way that I would like to define it is, again, in the report, it gives you the way that, gives you the way that the employee handbook reads right now, and I'd like to add paragraph C that says, employee means any active staff member who worked at least 10 hours in the last four weeks, or is scheduled to work at least 10 hours in the coming four weeks, and immediate family members defined as spouse, child, or stepchild. So, you know, I think our employees here put a lot of value in the fact that their family income is swim for free, comes in for free, but put a lot of value in the fact that they get a nice little benefit for the very low wages that we pay them to work here. And I really don't like to nickel and dime them. I think my point is, I just want to have a solid policy so the cashiers don't get confused when they're checking somebody in. So, I'll leave that to your discussion and your thoughts.
What is, what is the impact of 10 hours in the past four weeks? Does this include guarding and swim instruction?
Right.
Everything so that if I get guarded two hours and you're just instructed for two hours, that would be fine?
Right, that'd be, well...
And how many people would have cut out? Roughly, you know, I'm...
You mean how many employees, specifically how many employees would not be able to come swim? Or, are we talking about the definition of family or the definition of employee?
I'm looking at entitlement to use this privilege. How many people that would be, would see themselves as able to bring relatives are being cut out with the 10 hours, or whatever it is.
Cut out from whatever it is. So, how many hard work it can have? Very few. That's about three lifeguard shifts, depending on the length of the shift. That is, if you work full session of, just a full evening session of swim school lasts a month, that's four sessions, and you're in for, excuse me, eight, eight classes, and you're in for two and a half hours every time, so that's 20 hours. So, if you work a session of swim school, you got 20 hours. You know, I'm not seeing it's going to cut out a lot of people. Somebody decides they're going to take a session of swim school off, like this month we have, have some kids that have gone to the high school swim team, or, you know, some kids have taken vacation this time of year, then they're coming back next month, so, you know, the, if you work a session as an instructor and then you take a month off, and then you work the next month, then it doesn't affect you, so you'd still be able to swim.
So, do you have any history of how many people are getting, you know, being allowed to swim for free, their siblings versus children or spouses?
I don't know. But, I can't...
I saw in your email that you were kind of reviewing the policy manual. Maybe it's something we can look at in total with other things that you're going to find, and this is a year-end or beginning of the new year type of adjustment. I think we need to go through a few things, and it sounds like, maybe that's for future discussion here, but I don't know why we're picking on one little thing like this, except it sounds like, you know, it sounds interesting.
I move the, I moved the proposal, how pretty much do this? The employee 7.2 report.
Yeah. It's the employee handbook, correct? 7.2 of the employee handbook?
Yes, yes. I drew 7.2C as drafted here. You know, and then I'd want to see it back. I'd asked that you report back in a month so we can see how many people have actually been turned down, and maybe nobody.
Okay. So, we're...
I would do that.
Okay. So, you're going to make a motion, we make a motion to approve 7.2C, and with a report from a month on how many people it would affect? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
I think it's a great idea to clarify, regardless of if it cuts people out or not, at least, like you said, you're not putting the front staff in the position of saying yes or no either way. They didn't make your highest tax $300, I need to be clear about who's getting this kind, who's not.
Probably do need to define what family is. I mean, is it a cousin? Second cousin? I mean, what is it?
Well, immediate family members define it about it, and that...
Yes.
But right now, it's not defined, is it?
It's not, that's right.
I think that's what he's asking for.
A and B here, in the paragraph, that's as defined as it gets right now, so, my suggestion is, and it sounds like just what Alan was saying, that this is how we interpret.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Go ahead, Kurt, I'm sorry.
I mean, it seems a little discriminatory. So, if you're married, and you're 20 years old, you can bring your spouse and kids, but if you're single and you're 20 years old and you're doing the same amount of work, you can't bring your sister and allow them to swim with you. It's just kind of odd. I think it should be applied more toward how many hours a person works in a month. Are they full-time? Are they salaried? Are they working, you know, 1.5 FTE? And then you have a name on a list that they can, that qualifies under this program, and they can bring their family and their kids in, or their brothers, sisters, whoever. That would be my suggestion. I just think it's kind of discriminatory, because it is amazing, because they get so many punches a month, they can get to grill anyone they want, that's a pretty good idea. You know, because if you're a kid, maybe you don't have a family. You know, maybe you get a punch card, and you come like your sister, your brother, your mother, your cousin, your next-door neighbor. I mean...
I think that it's, we could have a benefit, like insurance companies, when you get insurance, it's your direct family, it's not your sister or your brother, and whether or not that sounds fair, I think that we're talking about a benefit here, that's what I understand it, and, and so you define family as, and if you're saying that we want to just give as a guest pass, that's something completely different. That's almost like gifting.
Family, love.
Where's that a benefit?
Letting your family do it, it's kind of gifting also.
Well, no, because it's kind of like insurance, when you buy insurance, the company, they allow your family members, I think it's that's who you support, who lives in your home, and we're saying that we're giving it as a benefit because their wages are so low.
That's a point, actually.
I guess your sister could live with you.
I think we'll be able to tell, and...
I should kind of get your point on that, kind of.
No, it's okay. Are you awake?
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
I think it's important...
Can I ask you a certain...
No, you may not. Please, thank you. I'm sorry, Lynn. I apologize.
You have a question?
No. I think we need to make sure that we don't discourage people, that they come in and still ask, because we need to know, I think it's important, and I think Kurt has a valid point, we need to know how many people we turn away this month, so, if the motion is approved, that is a critical factor, because if we have to come back and change it, you know, then we have the data to go come back and change it, if this is approved.
So, why don't we inventory it for a month? Inventory who comes in and brings a guest, and, and maybe it is a sister, brother, aunt, uncle, and look at it next month, and then make a decision on what we're going to do.
So, can we make it, Alan, do you mind if we amend the motion to do it?
Depends on the amendment, isn't it?
To do a what?
It depends what the amendment is.
To, instead of approving 7.2C as written, that we monitor 7.2C and see who comes in, a family member or not, for a month, and then take another look at this.
Okay, the only problem I have is that if it starts like getting vague, like friends and so on, then it becomes totally meaningless.
Right.
So, that, you know, if you're talking about family, then you're talking about family.
Right.
Now, whether it's a sibling or not, that might be something that you want to sort in there, but not just sort of like, I want to bring my buddies in.
Right.
And half the crowd will pay...
I don't think the current employees and immediate family members is what the current one reads, correct? 7.2A and B is what the current policy reads.
That's right.
And C is the only thing we're adding, so, what we're asking is, can we amend it, amend the motion to, we survey 7.2C and find out how many people come in, and how many people are family members and immediate family members and not immediate family? For how long? For a month?
Okay.
Okay, so we have that amended. Okay, till next meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Further discussion on the amendment?
Make sure I understand.
Yes, sir.
So, the cashiers, an individual comes in and says, this is my, this is my cousin.
They write down cousins.
Do they swim for free that day?
According to the current policy, they would.
Okay.
And what we'll do? They wouldn't?
Immediate family, can you not define cousins?
We haven't defined it, so, and here's the, here's the thing.
In practice, we have not, we've not been doing that in practice.
So, what have we been doing in practice then? There's my question.
Brothers, sisters, parents, probably no.
Okay.
Spouses and children.
Spouses and children. So, it would not include a cousin?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So, it puts a spouse, a child, a sibling, then the cashier, it says, okay, you swim today.
Yes.
And they just write it down, okay? Just making sure. Okay, for one moment.
The motion is to collect the data for one. Further discussion?
Now, are we going to use this data to make a different decision as to what, than there was on the bullet here? Although I just suggested that, I'm sitting here thinking, or just kind of define it in what the family member is, immediate family member. And I think immediate family member is pretty generic, like you can, like Google that, and it would have spouse, child, puts themselves. You know what I'm saying? We're sitting here discussing this back and forth, and it's really just trying to, if he were to pull it and say, okay, we had 20 cousins, well, the question still is, are we going to allow that as a benefit?
I like Steve's idea personally, but, James, free punch, you know, a few punches, cards, or whatever, a couple passes a month, and call it good.
Without the actual policy changes, that would be amending A, B, that's 7.2, and as you said, we can do that if we can agree here.
Yeah, I would like to see what else we want to change, I mean, if we're going to go through this, which sounds like we need to. But, I'm going to pull a month. Data collection, for sure.
So, we got a motion for a month of data collection? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
No.
Two, four, one against. Any abstentions?
Three.
Alan?
I'm having a hard time, I'm wondering how much time we're spending on this one, I can't figure it out. You know, if we want to count for a month and then vote on it next month, that's fine with me, so I'll hold the yes for my ground.
Okay, motion passes, three to one. Hold on. Guys, can you keep it down, please, just a little?
The N-LAC checking account has been closed. The $16,939.32 that was in that account is right now in our real-time bank account, and will be swept out of that account, leaving our county managed maintenance and operations account. So, the cash has been moved. What the commission wants to call it is still up in the air. The accounting board is sitting in a liability account in QuickBooks that says, I forget what it's called, it's essentially an N-LAC suspense account, waiting for the commission to decide what it is. That is not either was in the N-LAC bank account, last fall, and I guess, Sean, you, Kurt, and I sat and discussed what it might be, and, you know, the one suggestion came up was we just call it swim team revenue, and a note on our, on our year-end books saying that this is where it came from. That might be the simplest point, but it's all up to you.
Okay. Is it all in your report?
That's just a paragraph I had on the policy reviews, page 33 and everything, so, I don't know if you want to discuss it now, but...
No. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I've moved that we take 16, 939.32 and enter it as swim team revenue.
So, a motion to take the 16, 9, what was it again? 16?
939.32.
939.32, and enter it in the general budget as swim team revenue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
Who's going to control it?
The two bonded employees and us. So, right now, the two bonded employees, just to remind me, is yourself and Matt.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes.
Thank you. My only other issue is the age of the amount that I've got on the budget, the word we're standing right now, so, assuming you've all read it, and I probably want to just give a little discussion about what we are, so that we try to go through everything one at a time.
I would ask one question first on your comparative reports, and if it's possible, you can have it on a computer, but if you could give us a comparative number, like, you've got it for August, and you've got a, see, you've got a line down here for August 2012. If you had something like that, so that we could see what was happening in the different programs?
Sort of other column for this program?
Another column, just running it parallel, okay? Yeah. And give a clue. And the only other thing was, your swimming tax swims, your swims, your schedule, every evening is scheduled, but your budget, there are things in here. On this page, it's all colors. Okay, you've locked up swim school, so it goes as much larger than it used to be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Is there any reason for that? Larger meaning covering more space, meaning more lanes over time?
They don't actually take four lanes even, the morning session is not very good.
That's what I thought, and that's why...
They usually go three lanes.
Yeah, whereas you've got, they, with the private class, and sometimes it sort of sweeps out the rest of the pool, and if it thinks it adds four by right, and then adds the others, it's going to be a different...
Yeah, I mean, the size of the block does not necessarily indicate on the lanes the program counts, and it's a, I know we've discussed this before, but, you know, we try to keep it reasonable, and a swim school only has 10 kids, and then the morning session, which is kind of typical, it's not a very long-term session during school year, so, they just don't take a bunch.
So, we'll do three then?
It's a basis.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the schedule?
Which budget are we looking at here? There's one with pencil numbers encircled. Is that the one they're doing?
That's the one that I noticed referred to.
Okay.
Um, there's an issue with QuickBooks that I should probably explain. Kurt and I have kind of got back and forth on this, and it's a little frustrating to me that topic, I can't give, I can't seem to generate out of QuickBooks, it's actually a report that Kurt is after, and you want them to make a lot of sense if you can generate it correctly. If you look at the last five pages, you're beginning on page 38, probably lost budget groups actual, actuals through September 12, and then a budget amount through the end of the year. What I can't figure out, if you're a quick learner, if you want to help me out with this at some point, I would love it, I can't figure out how to get the budget number for the end of the year compared to a date that I specified, for instance, August 31st. I don't think they will do that, and part of the issue is that this budget was drawn up on a month-to-month basis. So, I wrote this budget with a specific amount where it's going to spend every month. As opposed to, it looks to me like in years past, the, that, those monthly amounts were probably part of the planning, but the actual budget that was drawn up in QuickBooks was an annual number. So, that would make it easy to run this report as of any date because of the number that was only entered for the end of the year.
Can't you just multiply it by a percentage of the year, like August 1st is, what, eight months?
Well, sure.
So it's 2/3, so you just done two.
Sure, but that, that doesn't answer the question that I'm asking, which is, I can't go back right now to August 31st and say, "As of August 31st, this is, this was our actual stint," because what QuickBooks will do is they'll take the budget through August 31st and only allow you to compare it to that. And they won't allow you to compare what you've actually spent on August, for instance, I run one early report today, September 19th, I can't go back and set the date of August 31st and ask it to compare that to the full budget for the year. So I get close, but if I run that report exactly on September 1st, then I get close, but there's, some of our revenues haven't been worked into QuickBooks because the month hasn't been closed yet on September 1st. But, that's, I think Kirk suggested actually today that for future reports, just run a report on the first of the month, that would give us a pretty good idea of what's on that.
And then print out that report.
Right, right. But the other report, well, it's before that, with the circle numbers on it, is the one that was, that was run after the month was closed, after August 31st, and ran it, closed the 31st month of the year. So it tells the amount we've taken in and the amount we've spent, actual, compared to the amount we're spending, taking and spending by that time of the year. It doesn't compare to December 31st.
What you're saying is that if we look at salary and wages, 576.20.10, with a seven on it, that the wages were $366,941, and that's over the budget by $31,178.
That's correct.
Okay, and so the budget was 335, and that 109% is 109% of what was projected for August 31st.
For August 31st, not for the end of the year.
Right, Alan, so if you go to the other group of pages, the line that says, "January through December 2013," look at that same line. The budget for the year is $500,000, which is much more useful for us to be able to see where are we in the year. Or, you know, going August, just, okay, it's just, even if you run it September 12th, it's a heck of a lot more useful than it is that month-to-month thing. So, you know, if you do it, I think it's close to the end of the month or the beginning of next month, it's probably just fine.
Okay. Just if I could get a consensus for it, if I do that?
That's my opinion.
I'd want to do that, just, that's easy enough, but would you like me to still provide both reports?
I want Kirk's report because it means something if I can see what we've got versus how we're doing and the spending, okay? If you just do it and say, "Well, by this point in the year, we have an empty hole in front of us," that doesn't help me a bunch at all.
Okay.
It's just a warning flag.
Just for planning purposes, then, when I put together the 14 budget, I have a worksheet that shows all this monthly stuff on the side, but I won't put that in QuickBooks. That will solve the problem. Then we have one annual number in every account, and then that will allow us to see what's going on on the year, every month, every year. So, okay, if we're actually, the state was, as far as reporting goes, the state was actually putting the monthly amounts in QuickBooks, as opposed to planning those on the side and putting an annual number.
There's some expenditures which come in blocks, like the revenues, and it would be really helpful to know what the patterns are, so that, for example, on the revenues, we know that the two blocks are taxed. And so, the total number is safe for us if we're trying to be prudent and make sure that we stay within that, that total number and watch the trajectory. But some of the expenditures are plotted year by year by year, like the whole insurance fee and that type of thing. And it'd be worthwhile having a note in your budget that this is in August, something rather July expenditure, okay, so that we could just see that in the plan.
So we're just discussing, I'm not sure, we're just discussing?
There's a lot to go over.
Format here, or? Did you want to bring up stuff now?
Yeah, I'd just like to take questions, I mean, there's so much to go over, if I try to do this point by point.
Well.
The man asked, I'll answer more questions, but maybe make a couple more out.
Well, I'll tell you, looking at it, I would like to see the budget, so we could see, like the swim club, its costs, its revenues, and then its costs directly below it, so you could see one program, what's, how's it doing. Whereas, we kind of lump all of our salaries and wages into one big group, you can't really see how much salaries and wages we're using for the club versus swim team, or something like that. I mean, you can, you see by title, but there's a big, there's a big group of lifeguards and senior lifeguards that I don't, you know, how do you apply those, what's required? And it would be very helpful to be able to break, you just see programs by revenue and expense, and maybe that's something we just have to work on. I know it's not in that format now, that I knew of.
I believe that, that we can code, code certain line items in QuickBooks as your overhead, for instance, utilities, pool chemicals, lifeguards.
Kind of allocate those.
Right, and then other ones as specific program expenses. Anything to do with swim team, swim instructors, we can even take, for instance, half of Erica's salary, since she spends about half her time managing the swim school, which is a revenue generating specific program, half of her time managing lifeguards, which is more overhead, we split hers out, so there are ways to do that.
I mean, I'm all for, you know, it's a community center, we want to spend money to improve morale in the community, and, you know, these programs are not designed to make money, and none of them really are, and, but there is, there has to be a limit, you know, to where we say, "Okay, we're spending this, this amount here, and we've got to say, it's time to cut some expenses because we need to improve this pool down the road."
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You can't throw all the money at, at programs. And I think this facility's old enough that we really need to, and with all the other things that are going on, we really need to some long-term planning on the amount of money we need to set aside every year. And we get that, and then we can go back and say, "Okay, what program is, you know, has good revenue and a ratio of expense," and set those ratios up in some kind of applicable manner.
It is all in the book. If you look at, if you look at specific programs, how much they bring in, what their direct expenses, I mean, we've talked about N WAC, and $40,000, I mean, that was in the budget for this year. The swim school actually contributes a little bit a month to water time, even with these overages that we're talking about, and how much, $13,000 of a budget in, in swim school instructor pay here to date, even with that, even taking half of Erica's wages, plugging it in there as well, we still make money in the program. So that's, that's a program that actually comes a little bit of lack, when you take aerobics, and they're actually paying for your water time when they come in. So there's, there's, there are programs that are bringing us a little bit, there are programs that, that, you know, the rental program, maybe dollars, which are just people's $68 a lay-in hour, don't increase that much. And somebody comes in and rents, they're paying the highest rate of anyone, so we're, yeah, we're polar mapping, that almost covers the cost, it's about $20 a lay-in hour to run the pool, and so that almost covers the cost of water time. So it's, you know, depending on, depending on the program, I see a problem. But that's more of a budgeting thing.
Well, that's, that's something we just have to all sit down and just pound it out, you know, preferably not at 8:00 in the evening.
When I was chair of this commission, and then went on to cover after I was there, we set up a program planning, kind of budgeting system for this operation, and it should be in your file somewhere, because we checked with the state and made sure that the format is proper, and so we were running two sets of books, but they should be in each of the, each of the minutes, for whatever year that was. It's the last two Craig was director, you've figured it out. And we had all the stuff done there, we had the numbers done and everything else. It's like corn teeth, but, you know, we managed to keep it going for a while, and then I don't know what happened when I got off, when we started, so I just didn't figure out what year it was. 2010 and 2011. I have purposes left to do here.
Yep. Did you hear that, Bill? 2010 and 2011?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Alan.
So, I, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to look at line items, I, I do have to go back to say that, looking at the year-to-date, we're, we're in the hole pretty good, and that's even if you ran the report a few days off, you know.
Could you amplify that a little bit? Yes. Just like you're saying, it's.
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry. So I took your January through December budget that we were looking at, with the budget line items versus what we spent year-to-date through September 12th. And our program revenue, it's just hard to follow, it's on page two, or, yeah, it would be page two of that budget, $608,860. And that's the January through December 2013. See that?
So, page two, January through December.
Yeah, so here's all the revenues, and then there's, there's our bottom line revenue number so far.
Okay, so from the second page of that.
Yeah, and then our budget's about $984,000, $985,000 for the year. So we're at 61% as of now. If you looked at eight months, eight divided by 12 is about 67%, so we're a little under for our revenue.
You get a huge pop in October from taxes, so that.
Yeah.
It's up for that, which is why the other report is relevant, where it shows that what we had planned up to August 1st is 2% over that. If you look at page two of that report.
Okay, yeah.
Page 33 of the, of the overall.
That makes sense, so you're right. We're going to get that big pop of revenue and that will.
Overall revenues here are, are not in issue, but it's the expenses that are, you know, what I'm trying to lay out for you here.
Well, our expenses then, compared to our budgeted expenses, are 79% right now, and they should be closer to 70%, so we're about 10% up on expenses. If we look at expenses, because you're right, revenue, we are going to get a nice influx from the county, $200,000 there, $250,000, so that's going to knock out that, that negative. And you're right, I failed to look at that. So that's going to put us in the plus, but if we continue to progress to the expenses the way they are, we definitely, I think, exceed that $984,000, or we're going to have to slow down, let's be sure.
You did mention in your report, you are, you have talked to the, I saw it somewhere, you talked to the entire staff about tightening the budget belts, right?
Yep, yep, and, you know, there, there are a couple of things where, and by the way, I'm going to pick them here, I mean, you guys hired me to be in charge of the district, and I take it very seriously, and I'm not happy at all about what this budget says. It's my responsibility, I got this here, okay, so, no matter what members of the public have to say about that, this is me, I'm, I'm responsible for this. There are these issues with the lifeguards and the swim instructors, the annual budget, to the tune of about $29,000. That could be a little bit of poor budgeting from last year, that could be a little bit of lax management this year. I do know that our swim program, our swim instruction program is hit over heels better than it was six or eight months ago when we did that survey. We get nothing but praise from people about how organized we are, we greet people when they come in on their first day, and they make, we make sure they're directed exactly to the right instructor. People that come to this program are happy, as it happens, we spent about $15,000 too much in payroll to make that happen. And I allowed Erica, probably shouldn't have done that, I probably should have been more on top of that, but I allowed her to continue mentoring some of these instructors, even classes as small as four, when they had passed their W S I, and she didn't still feel like they were quite exactly where she needed them to be, as far as their structural capability built, she paired them up with a more senior instructor. That costs too much money, I take responsibility for that, but I will tell you, again, our program is much better now than it was eight months ago. I do plan to run another survey just to kind of see how people are feeling about it. But I'm very happy with the job that Erica has done, with both the lifeguards and the instructors, and getting them all on the same page. We're going to skip our training session this month, save a little bit of bucks, but, you know, there are things like pool chemicals and utilities, and just basic gardening and basic staffing, that, these are given, we're not going to be able to get out the money that burden coming down every day.
All right, thank you, Bill. Any other questions, comments, or concerns with the budget as it stands?
So we, we have some more legal fees probably in our horizon as far as what just, you know, this basic former employees.
Yeah, I haven't seen, Nathan, you know, I think you know, Keller Allen does not charge, I see charges in yours, so our insurance company is paying the full trip on these. Nathan has to have a chance to review everything that's going on in that case, mission cases. So we're trying to keep that to a minimum. He's, he's been generous enough, because we're paying him a lot of money, he's been generous enough to offer his conference room for free when Keller comes over here to do his deposition and things.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Does Nathan, I know Keller represents the insurance company, Nathan represents the district, and there's a, there is a difference. Would it be cheaper to have Nathan review the depositions instead of being there, paying for his hours that he's there?
Like, excuse me, yes, I can ask him that.
I mean, do you, you know, do we have to pay Nathan to be there, you know, to sit there? Because he's not doing the deposition, Keller is, you know?
There's a, there's a certain amount of monitoring that he needs to do, that, you're right, it may be good to just have a review afterward.
Just how much do we need to have him do?
Prior to a deposition, there's a planning session, and you need to do it for about an hour, maybe he goes to that, takes office, something else, and then you do it afterwards, I guess.
I think we need to look at the cost.
Yeah, we're, we're double on that line.
Yes, we are. Well, and that was an inflated budget number, too, which, I remember looking at my assumptions when I wrote it up last year, we had a pretty good idea, we're going to be facing a couple lawsuits, so, you know, if the previous year's budget is, yeah, $75,000, I think I wrote it at $12,000, it wasn't much. That legal fees line also includes state auditors investigation as well.
How's that going, Ted?
They say that final report is going to be out October 7th, if you will. They were about ready, as you know, they were about ready to publish it two months ago, and begin some additional information, they decided they had to, rather than just adding that to the report, they had to take breaks on and just.
of those legal fees also.
Potential.
Okay, there is that. Yeah, it would be. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns on the budget before we move on? All right, I have good news. Really good news. We cannot complete the Director's Performance Review or the District Mission Statement because the chairperson left them at home. So those will both have to be tabled until next month.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you.
Real contribution.
That was positive too, not at all. So unfortunately, those will have to both be tabled till next month. So consideration of resolution and 0902. I was the one that brought this in here and the reason I brought this up here was not to make any changes or deletions, but Allen was here. I know he wrote the res, correct me if I'm wrong.
I can't remember.
Allen had a part in resolution. It's safe to say Allen had a part in the creation of resolution 0902.
It's never to run again, but that time too.
That's true. That's, you did. And I, I wanted to review it because there's been a lot of discussion both by the board and by the public about the resolution. And one of the things that kept coming up, and I never saw it in here, was it had to do with the separate funds that were set up by, that we actually self-reported on, both for Wiric and for the N W A C. And nowhere in here did it give any of our programs the ability to have.
No, in fact, in fact, there was a real pressure to not have programs have their own accounts.
Okay.
And what the, what we did do, which changed it from the earlier, with set earlier resolution, 9972, as I remember it, was to have an account which is literally a flow-through account. So a coach could pay the entry fees or the meet fees and people could give the money or someone's to give the money to the coach and so on, even as a bundle when you're looking at me, but there was no money beyond that.
So the intent, I'm sorry.
And some commissions are really large.
Yes, so the intent was only to have the flow-through account, but four meet fees, four meet fees.
That ongoing type of stuff like meet fees, yes.
Okay, all right. So it was never, and there's nothing in here, the way I read it, and I just wanted to make sure, there's nothing in here that says anything about setting up separate accounts.
No, and that's why at number two and three, let's see, where the, the district was taking over all of the dues that were paid to the teams.
Correct.
And in return was paying for the coaches and team expenditures.
Okay.
So that it was centralized and we had to do that under the law. The state requires that.
Okay.
And so this was making sure that we did that. And then what we had was we had number four and number four gave the capacity for the coach to actually do the administering of a meet by taking the kids' money, putting it together and saying, okay, these are the races you're swimming in and this is the entry fees covering all of those people. And so that was all that was, it wasn't a bank account.
Okay. All right. I just.
The accountability was number five. And then the team's bylaws, our handbooks had to be filed with the Director and be available for a review by the Commission. That was again to make sure that the Commission was staying in control of the rule of success.
Okay. Thank you. You, you answered my questions and about this and cleared it up.
Remember it was a hot day then.
Remember Harvey was very hot about certain things. Any other questions about resolution 0902?
Is there something we're trying to accomplish here?
Yes, yes. I wanted to make sure it's said in there, nowhere, and talk to somebody who was here for this, that is now a current Commissioner, that nowhere in here does it say that these teams can set up their own accounts. It was confirmed. So, yeah, that doesn't say that in there and that was confirmed and it was part of that Commission before us that approved this resolution.
Can I maybe be an complicated?
Please, by all means.
It's been an ongoing tension between the different teams and this mission over court control way. This was said ago as we were clear. But then there were sort of, at times, different organizations came up, sort of friends are and they would hold functions and they might have money, but had nothing to do with public money or the Commission. And we tried to make sure that it didn't overlap. And so this was a clear definition of our job.
Right.
Okay. But there were other things going on there and, but they had nothing to do with the Commission or the American parents of the team, but they had nothing to do with the team and its operation under the Commission.
It was done separately.
Separately.
Separately. Keyword, okay. Right. Okay. Did that clarify? Any other questions?
I guess so. It seemed to me when I read this before that it did authorize the ability to set up some kind of an account for a pass.
Yes, he, he mentioned that. It is, entry fees, number four.
Number four.
Number four, entry fees for events are to be recorded when paid by the, or to the, and is submitted to the meet authority directly by the coach or a designated meet.
That was number four was clear.
Okay. But that's through the district that was supposed to pass.
Number four went through the head coach.
By the coach or by the, directly by the coach or the designated.
But it wasn't public money. It would be like if you're swimming in a race, you have to pay five bucks.
So if my kid was swimming, I paid five bucks and then the coach would be.
Put it together and then put it in as a block with.
Right. Or if my kid was running for Wiric and I paid five bucks to run at Oregon, then the coach would have that five bucks for that entry fee. And I'm sure there's running coaches, running.
So that's why the account was set up, which I'm sure just a, a bunch of coaches are going to carry around all that.
But nowhere does it say that monthly dues, all dues are to be paid to N W P R D.
And so they were being paid into that account?
Well, we can't talk about that.
Oh, okay. All dues are paid to the, what pays the district?
We, we can't talk about that until October 7th.
Okay.
Until that finding from the state, not by me, not by anybody else, until the state says something, we're not going to talk about that.
Talk about what I'm not talking about.
Go right ahead, sir. There you go. Go for it.
So it's totally awkward.
That's true.
Except you.
That's true. It was set up to be, to not be paid, it was set up to be paid directly to the district, correct? That was what you're saying.
By number two.
Okay.
All dues are to be paid to N W P R D.
I'm not disagreeing. Yes.
So are we saying that this resolution is valid then?
Oh, it's, it's valid. It's already been voted and passed on. So I wanted to bring it forth for discussion by the board and any questions I wanted answered.
Answered.
They're answered.
Good.
Mine, mine answered, I'm good. All right. Cool. Okay, the other thing we need to add to new business is we need a secretary. So.
Little person on the totopool basically.
Little person on the totopool has just volunteered for the job, so.
As long as I've got tape to listen to, I'm okay.
You have tape?
All right.
So Kurt has volunteered, so can, can somebody nominate Kirk?
I'd like to nominate Kirk cover as the new secretary, kind of replacing secretary for the Commission.
So we have a nomination for Kirk as the new secretary for the board, for N W P R D. All in favor of Kirk being the new secretary? Aye. Aye. All against? All abstaining?
I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. Good luck, Kirk.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it, it does. It does. We have no additional folks sign up for public discussion, so we will move to discussion with final comments and questions from the Commissioners. I'm Steve.
One thing I would like to say, of course, I speak well today for me, it's supposed to catch up. There's some orders, got to have a state pet and a fire. So there you go. My ally, she did too, and all the other girls did as well. And they have a swim meet coming up next Monday night here at the pool. So if anybody wants to come out and cheer them on, I'm sure they would appreciate it. And then the next Saturday, they have the swim meet with, oh my goodness, Chantel Johnson and Kathy Mercer Island. Chantel was an Oak Harbor girl. Her mom and dad still live here, Isaac and Fay. Wonderful couple. And anyway, so they're going to have, I guess, an exhibition.
No, it's a, it's a.
Is that legit?
It's non-con.
Okay, because they're four a.
Right. Yeah, but it's a scheduled, scheduled section meet by, by last night, I guess.
So if you come, if you're extra out for my group, because I'm going to be at the Marine Five concert, it's gorgeous. So, so there you go. With Coach, I just want to say thanks. And, you know, I think that that, you notice that doing that kind of proves that you guys during the time, and that's her, she's faster than I was a year ago. So I know mom appreciated it and wanted me to say thank you. And my ally won her 50 free and her 100 flying A J V. That's very cool, third in her breast, her breast. And once again, faster than she was a year ago and I said thank you. And you did a good job. And that's all I have.
Kirk.
That's good. You're good.
Stroud? Comments?
No.
All right. I would, I do have something. I, I thank the coach for putting into his head coach report what I asked for. I look forward to seeing it more developed next month. So, and I will have something out to the five of us and to Dave also about a workshop. And of course, we will make that open to the public. There will be no public comment, but they'll be allowed to come and watch because it will be the five of us having a meeting, so we have to invite them, as we should. I also want to say that it's a, no matter how much we argue and disagree here, our day is not always that bad and hopefully everybody will pause and remember the 12 families that were impacted this last week at the Washington Naval Yard in Washington, DC. Another tragic event, unfortunately, in our nation. So please keep those folks in mind. Any further discussions or comments? September, yes, all right. Well, go right ahead, Kirk.
Well, I just hate it. I say no comments from the public, but I've got some great input, you know, in some areas. I really wish there was a way, and maybe we can discuss this during our public workshop, that we can allow for some feedback at one point or another. They might see some things that we just don't, you know? A lot of heads put together sometimes, you know, and constructive comments hopefully. And maybe, you know, some, might be tough to hear too, but I don't know how you do that.
Throw ideas and Dave, please send me an email. No, can't do that. That's a discussion. I will throw out a date for the meeting and we can discuss it at next month. We can't throw out emails even to this for ideas and we'll leave a block open for public comments.
It would have to be ground rules before I.
Yeah. And we'll discuss that next, but it's me.
Because the constant attacks on the Director, I'm not going to sit and listen to that.
No, I agree.
If it's constructive, that's one thing, but I'm not going to sit here and listen to two hours, I'm going to tear this guy down repeatedly, the same old thing. So we'll do it.
Okay. All right, so we'll have something, a date, I'll send a date out to everybody and don't send me back anything that says yes I can make it or not. Please don't. Take the date, let me know next month at the meeting in public whether or not you can make it or not. So, matter of fact, I'm going to send the date to you and ask you to send it out to everybody. All right? That way if anybody accidentally hits reply, it goes to you and not to me. All right? That would be perfect. All right, no other discussion. Our next meeting is October 17th at 7:00 PM. We're down to that final item.
I didn't check the date yet. Said the date for.
I'm going to send a date, you know, I was starting to.
Yes, I'm going to send it to you in an email. Will that work? Yeah, true, Bill's going to send you that. Thank you very much for that. All right, so we're down to.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Have we got a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion, meeting is adjourned at 9:15. Thank you very much.